All right, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We are gonna start with a pledge of allegiance followed by. All right, so the first thing on the agenda is to amend the agenda.
I got a open container permit for a charity softball tournament, so.
If you want to put that as the last part underneath it, no?
That would be great.
So I believe we need a motion.
I moved to amend the agenda to include the liquor permit.
Opening painter permit.
Did you say?
All right. Mary, how do you vote?
I.
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 Ryan.
Hi.
All right, so that's gonna be the last item under new business. The next thing is to approve the previous minutes from our March 26th meeting.
Do we have a motion?
To approve the minutes from our 26, 2025.
A second. Okay, perfect. Mary, how do you vote? Or is there any discussions? Hearing none. Mary, how do you vote?
Hi.
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 Ryan.
Hi.
Okay, so that has passed. Next, we have public comments for item not on the agenda. And I don't think we have anyone besides the board members. All right, so we'll get right into new business. First, we have a discussion item for major equipment needs as reflected in the capital plan. And it looks like there's four different things we're gonna talk about here.
Correct. So I included in the packet, it's nothing that needs to be referenced, but when we voted on the capital plan last year and this year, it's got all the money in the front of the second page that shows equipment in the replacement schedule. And on that, the ones that are in pink, you see there's a dump truck, a loader, and an ambulance, and a police car. And police car, I didn't include on this because police cars cost a lot less than dump trucks and we can just take care of that as they come along. But I'd like to move forward with those purchases, particularly because some of them are looking to be two to three years out from the time you order them. And we're already kind of behind from COVID. So just to go down the list real quickly. We have a 2008 loader, we have a, I'll call him a big loader and a little loader. So this is the big one. And we split that between the water sewer and highway departments, so that makes it a little easier. We can split the cost in between those three. And it gets used on a regular basis, but you can see the last one, it's about 20 years old. For that, at this point, what I'd like to suggest is that we pay cash for that. And we take sixty some odd thousand from each of those budgets. And kind of what I'm my suggestion is going to be that in the past, we have every single time borrowed. And we were borrowing at rates that were in the twos, so it seems, and we had no money in the bank. So it seemed easier to pay 2%, 2 and 1/4, 2 and 1/2 to borrow the money and keep our money in the bank earning 1% anyway. We have more money in the bank and there's gonna be a fair amount of capital needs coming along, road and sewer repairs. That it's not gonna end and it's, I don't think, gonna get cheaper anytime soon, so if we can take some things out of savings and if boards continue to commit to funding the capital reserves, we can probably go a few years where we can buy some bigger equipment and not take on the debt while the debt that we have for the trucks that are on the fleet retire. So if you, if you had a very simplistic model and two trucks retire that were paying $35,000 a year a piece on, usually they're five-year loans and the trucks like this one is almost 10 years old, so that there's a a period of time where you're not making a payment. Well, you could simplistically say, well, those debt payments will put towards capital reserves. So maybe we get to a point where we're putting away a couple hundred thousand a year in capital reserves. And until interest rates go back down to 2% again, you can, you can pay cash on a philosophical point. The bigger projects like water and sewer where you're talking 20-year notes, I go more along the lines of the people who are gonna be using that product for the next 20 years are the ones that should be paying for it. Don't save up, save up, save up, save up. And then the day you break ground is the day somebody moves out of town. So you have all their money that they've been paying through for taxes and they never see the benefit of the new road or the new sidewalk and things like that. Vehicles are a little bit different because the loans are shorter. The next item is a replacement of a dump truck.
I ask a question, sorry. Yeah, when's the last time we bought something like fully out just in cash? It's because you're saying you want to pay for.
Yeah, I don't think, we haven't paid, the first, the last or the first and the last thing was that sidewalk plow that was 50 grand.
Yeah.
Everything else since I've been here has been five-year loans. And the fire truck guy had a 10-year loan.
And when did we, we bought the sidewalk plow last year or two years?
The spring. Wait a minute, last fall.
I don't know, but so like it, everything, like all the time that has passed and the things that are going on, it makes sense to do it out in cash. That's just not something they normally do, but it's something we're in a good position to do right now.
Well, yeah, there's, we have more money in the bank, that's good, but it also makes a difference paying 6 and 1/2% on.
I, that makes a lot of sense to me.
But in fairness, we also get 4% on the CDs we're doing, so there's the spread's only between 2 and 3%.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Ryan?
I just was kind of touching or piggybacking, I guess, on what Tom said, although I hate that phrase, but the borrowing money right now seems very expensive with these interest rates. Most of the stuff he's done before has been relatively cheap, if not. I mean, 2% is pretty, pretty good, but it just seems like it's very expensive now to borrow money, so. And this is kind of the reason we've been saving up, right, Tom?
Uh, yeah. That it's a we didn't have enough in the bank to handle not a catastrophic failure, but just like a pretty big failure. Now we do, and it doesn't mean you want to spend it all down, but it means I think you can look at item by item. And when I get to the next one, that may be a good example of it's not a all one way or all the other way. When it was borrowing money for really cheap, it was all one way. Just keep borrowing the money, save more money. And we also had across the board, a very tired fleet, the highway, ambulances, all that kind of stuff, like everything was needed. And if you go back and look in budget discussions from seven, eight, nine years ago, the discussions was, there is no order in which we're gonna replace things, we're just waiting for whatever breaks next. And so we had to have enough money on hand if we had to just run out, buy something, so we're in much better shape than that now.
Mary?
How much is in the capital fund? I know I probably should know this after the budget, but off the top of my head.
You're not supposed to know that, because I don't know off the top of my head, so. There is, there is a bottom line. About 660,000. The dump truck is a a different scenario, we, we need a new one. If we go and buy one, if you place the order now, the guidance we're getting is one to two years. One year probably, it's not gonna be here in a year, two years, it'll definitely be in a year and it'll fall in somewhere along the way. There is a truck that matches all the other ones sitting on the lot at one of, there's only a couple of truck dealers. Anyway, so they have a cabin chassis that's like 125,000. That's available now. That's something we could either borrow for or pay cash for. And then they ship that off to the company that puts the dump body on and outfits the truck. And round numbers, that's another 100,000. So you're looking at 225 for the whole thing. We can either order one and the whole thing gets paid for. And whenever it shows up, or we can do this half and half thing, that gets us in the queue faster. And the other thing is what we're the quotes we got for the truck that it replaces is if it can be turned in in a year, we'll get somewhere in the neighborhood of 50,000 for it. And if it's two years, that's probably more like 40. So they're buying a, the same as buying a car, you know, they'll tell you whatever they want to tell you, you know, there's other people in line to buy this truck too. But there could be, you know, a pretty good reason to say, well, we'll just, we'll borrow that money. It's not nearly as much, so the payment's less. But when it comes time for the dump body to come on, we'll pay cash for that part. So instead of borrowing two, we're borrowing what? Hundred thousand. You're on that team?
I'm on that team.
Okay. And it gets worse. By a lot. We don't have a ladder truck. We had a 1999 ladder truck that there are legends about, bought on eBay for 135,000. Company went out of business as we put all kinds of money into it. It's, we got rid of it because the last quote was about $60,000 to fix it. And that's not fixing and fixing, it's fixing what was broke at that time. So we sold that off to someplace. Kevin has been keeping an eye out on used equipment. There was one that looked like it had some promise down in Pennsylvania. And we paid a thousand bucks to have somebody go through it and they said no. But everybody's in the same position. A new truck is between a million and a half and 2 million, and it's three to four years. Get one. So if a good one comes on the market, there's usually a pretty quick demand. Also, though, we can put our name out there with the different brokers that do this and they can keep an eye out for something that's appropriate for our size community and the thing we have. A ladder truck is one of those things I hear, what do we need that for? We don't have that many tall buildings. There's, and Kevin will explain this better the next time he comes around, but I think he talked about it during the budget. We do have tall buildings. But something people sometimes don't associate it with is we have a very densely populated parts of town, so the ladder truck can go up and spray surrounding buildings when they're all right next to each other. Another example came up is if you have something that's a little further out in the country and you need, you can't get close and you need a ladder truck to spray water down, so we're fortunate in that we have good working relationships with surrounding towns and I don't know exactly, I don't want to misstate what the agreement is, but like Weatherfield has a ladder truck, but they're a volunteer department. So there's some version, it's like that truck is the first to respond, but we'll, we'll man it, you know, that kind of thing. So just get it someplace and we'll have the people there to run it, so. Jokingly, people say, well, how do we get our Christmas lights up and stuff like that? Sometimes it was in handy to have a ladder truck for that too, but that is the joke, not the need, so. Kevin is keeping an eye out, and I think that may be something like, hey, here's an opportunity, what do you think? So keep that in mind.
Do you know how much a ladder truck usually goes for? Like a used one?
Well, that, that's a used one, that's, that's, that's good. Half a million dollars. New one, a million and a half to two.
With a way to pull my line.
Would it even be two?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Two million by the time three or four years went by.
Well, and that's another thing, like we're in a dynamic environment, let's say, it took us almost three years to get our last advanced care, we have a fire truck coming in that's through that grant, we expect to get that in June. But it used to be sign the contract and that's your price. Now it's signed a contract that puts you on the list and we can't guarantee the pricing because it's so far out.
Brian?
Yeah, I just did a quick search just for used fire trucks, they're going for like 1.2, 1.3. An older one's like 750 now, so I think it makes a lot of sense to push forward on this. Because it's not gonna get any cheaper, like Tom said, I people are signing these contracts, but the manufacturer's coming back and charging you twice of what you signed the contract for.
And I don't, I don't know that it's all doom and gloom like our last.
You guys.
Yeah, well, it's, this is like the planning part that it's I think I mentioned a couple of months ago, that this next year, I really do want to set the table of the, the big picture of what's needed out there. I think the town has been very supportive of the spending. But it's, but it's gotta be value, and if you only look at each thing at a time, you're really gonna miss the scale of what the cumulative debt is, particularly when you commit to things that you're not gonna pay for, for some time out. Like even if we were to borrow something today, if we buy something today and borrow for it, you won't see the first payment for a year. So if that's going on multiple times, that's, that's a problem. It's been less of a problem because we've really been in a routine of highway trucks and ambulances just cycling out. When COVID came along and we started going some years without replacement, that was not as good as it might appear, like, oh, we don't need to replace them that often. It's not just the repair costs, it's the reliability on emergency equipment that you have to have, it's got to roll when it needs to roll, so. But like those last two ambulances, they are, you've seen they look more like Sprinter vans as opposed to the big box things. And because of the changing market, designs changed, so when one of our box basic ambulances went from somewhere around 150,000 a unit to 225,000 a unit, one of these came in at like 150,000, 125,000 a unit. So the market changed to meet things. And I know the emergency services industry, what's happening isn't acceptable to anyone, so hopefully clever people will come up with that, different things. The other side of it is where we would get 15 to 20,000 for a used truck, now we're talking at 40 to 50. So there's a little bit of cushion on the back end because everybody's looking for something that's decent.
Hey, hey. I'm just, I, in terms of invest, like investing in the fire department, which is just like investing and making sure people don't die, so I use the term investing lightly. But would you rather put more money into a ladder truck or into maintaining the ambulances? And second question is, I am so scared this is gonna sound silly. How much would it be to trick out the ambulance we do have with a ladder? I don't know, I don't have any concept of that, so. Like, like, it's not, it's not an, it's.
Yeah, that that doesn't happen.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
There, you can trick out a ladder truck to make it a really expensive thing, like if you're in New York City, they probably have eight different kinds of ladder trucks more because they have eight different scenarios to do. And so this is what they look for, and again, I don't want to speak for Kevin, but it's gotta be able to meet the needs of a community our size, be able to meet the, the road infrastructure of our size, so you don't get the biggest one ever. You get whatever fits, but you don't buy them off the rack and you can't say, well, let's take a tanker and turn it into a ladder.
No, no, I just, I thought we had like a different. I don't know, okay, skip that question. Which one would you rather invest in and getting another ladder truck or trying to maintain the ambulance?
If we had to spend, if we could get a decent ladder truck for half a million dollars, I would put that first. And it comes in the category of, we have ambulances. So if we're gonna cross our fingers, let's cross our fingers that the ambulances work. Because if you cross your fingers on not needing a ladder truck and you need a ladder truck, that's, that's a bad scenario, like if you don't, if you just, we have the mutual aid as I, as I said, but I think I'd go that way. The issue is, oh, you don't, you don't know when or if something like that's gonna become available, so I would say, you know, prepare for the worst and hope for the best, so, you know, start looking at, maybe we're gonna spend a million and a quarter and a million and a half, and how would we pay for that? And if something comes up for 700,000, we grab it. Or 500,000. Which gets us to our ambulances, you see we have a 2018. And that's gonna be two to three years out, that's gonna be an old ambulance, this is, we have call them like a transport ambulance, they take patients from Mount of Scotty to Dartmouth and things like that. And they do other runs, but then we have our advanced care that has more capabilities, paramedics would use those for a more critical transport or for a 911 call. So we need them, they have gone up significantly in price, and if we're looking that many years out, that's something that I can see coming to the board sometime in the next three to six months and asking the, for the authority to place the order and not seeing it for some time.
Yes, Mary.
How much does Jack go for?
That was my question.
275 to 300,000. And it's, it's in the capital budget there, I think at 250. And I think when that was put together, it was figuring there'd be some escalation like 225 or probably go up to 250, and now we're looking at escalation three years out of being 300. But maybe they'll fix something.
I have two questions. Are there any grants that could possibly help with any of these that we know about right now?
Yes, kind of like the fire truck grant we got. They're super competitive. And if you, if you just take a cross-section of America, there's more Windsor's than there are New York cities. And there aren't too many communities that can really afford this kind of thing, so everybody goes out, out to those grants and if we had to pay Kevin extra for the grant work that he'd done over the years in order to get that thing, it probably would have cost more than the truck cost, but, you know, he was very vigilant in following year after year. And that perseverance is one of the things that checks the box when they, when you show consistent need. As well as you don't rely on the program for everything, that you can see that the community does support it in other ways, so.
And then the other thing that was just floating around in the back of my head was I know that when we did the budget, we moved the rest of what was left of ARPA into, I want to say, the reserve. And I think that was a little over $100,000, and I just didn't know if it could that help.
Well, that's, that's part of the discussion of not just borrowing, but taking some money. But again, it looks like a lot of money until you start spending it. So being judicious with it, but it gives us some flexibility. All right, so that's the, that's the what the fleets look like. The good news is the stuff we do have is in reasonably good shape, so things break, they break when you use them, so it's not like we go without issues, but nothing's on its last leg.
Were there any other questions in this section before we move on? Okay, hearing none. We now have an action item to consider the approval of bio solids application agreement.
Okay, so for those who, the uninitiated in the world of municipal waste, it goes somewhere, okay? That's, that's the part. So we, we have been fortunate for decades in that the treatment plant does its magic to take what it takes in and put out what it puts out, and it is a pretty thorough plot process between the liquids that are discharged and the solids that are discharged. So for a long time, we have had a relationship with a local farm to spread the solids on their fields. Okay?
Have you ever been to the tree?
On my list, I want to go, but that's.
They grow tomatoes down there. Remember this in my field trip as a child.
This comes up every year, we've heard this before.
Like the state oversees a project, you know, it all has to get tested, the farm has to be okay with it. A long time. And there may be some, like this, this I don't know, like if it can only be used for animal feed, you know, the, the, the crops that grow, I don't know if that's true or not. But we'll say, at least for me, whatever makes that stuff grow, it usually is something a bit unsettling that you wouldn't want to go right from source table, right? You'll put it in the ground, let it grow into something that tastes better and off it goes, so. Accepting that this is a standard practice and accepting that it saves us a fair amount of money and provides a little side income to a local farm. The reason this is up for consideration now is the farm has changed hands, so we have to change the names of the owners. So the contract terms are the same as with the prior owner, so this is just same terms of a new owner. So I would need a vote of the board to, vote to approve the bio solids application agreement.
Make a motion to approve the bio solids application agreement.
That's a good. All right, is there any discussion?
I really, the only question I would ask is like, should we charge them more?
They.
For the quality of the product?
You pay them to allow us to do it.
Oh, never mind. Then we, then they should charge us less. I guess that's what I'm saying, just kidding, all right, I'm done, all right, that's really funny.
So what's, can I ask what a farm it is?
It is, it is the, the goat farm down on Route 5 South.
Okay, all right, wow.
Those big, I think cornfields mostly, was that?
Every time I drive by now, I'm gonna have different thoughts.
No, I can't wait to tell my little.
Well, I can regale you in a story at some, I wear a manure pile down there caught on fire.
And you can smell it.
So I put something in the newsletter saying that a manure fire spontaneously combusted. Picked up by 14 newspapers across the country, my brother called me from Philadelphia saying it was on Ripley's Believe It or Not, and it made it on the wait, wait, don't tell me. So when you say manure and spontaneously combust in one sentence.
Windsor, Vermont comes up.
Most famous day.
Okay, we have to, we gotta go, what's?
Mary, how do you vote?
Hi.
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 Hi, Ryan.
Hi.
All right, so that has passed. We have another action item. This is for the rec department, air handling update to consider the approval of up to $300,000 in municipal buildings maintenance bond in the event that the state low interest program is not approved.
Okay, so if this sounds like deja vu all over again, it's several months back. You did vote to apply for up to 300,000 from the state low interest program for energy efficiency upgrades. Like so many of these programs, they are full of bureaucracy. And we are working with the contractor, efficiency Vermont, and the state to get the qualification numbers together. Essentially, what the problem is, the stuff up there is so old. They, they, you have to, you have to be able to check the box on what the efficiency increase is. Like, well, yeah, it's a lot more efficient because it was from 1960s. So the efficiency Vermont people have been gracious enough to step in and say, well, usually we do calculations this way, but we can do it that way, so we're trying to help, help you get that through. I think we're gonna get that, and it sounds like there's also between 15 and 30,000 of rebates that'll be available on this through efficiency Vermont. But I was notified 10 days ago or so that they're gonna be onsite very end of April, beginning of May to do the work, and it's gonna be two months. So that's, we have a window between the basketball season and summer camps, so that's really when it's gonna happen. If they're dragging their feet on getting the low interest approval, we're gonna need to be able to pay them. So what my, what my expectation is, is that we will get a bond anticipation note to pay. And then we'll wait for this, this process to work out, and if we get the low interest one, we'll pay off the bond anticipation with the low interest. If that doesn't go through, we'll pay it off with the standard municipal bond. So this just gives us the flexibility to, with confidence, say, please proceed.
All right, so we would need a motion for, this would be for a $300,000 bond.
Municipal bond.
I'm making motion for the three hundred thousand dollar municipal bond.
I will second that. And do we have any discussion?
Specifically for the rec center.
Uh, rec center, yes.
All right.
I, 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 Brian.
All right. So that has passed. They may continue. And let's see. So uh, then we have the open container. This is going to be an action item for an open container permit for a softball game. It's a memorial. Is it the Rudy Memorial?
That's what it is. It's very well, twenty-six, twenty-seventh. Dave Becky has put this on for the last few years and um, the Rudy Hancheck uh, memorial raises funds, goes to a variety of local causes. So they've always been well managed out there.
All right. So we would need a motion. I move to uh, approve the open container application.
I'll second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
I, I, I.
Brian?
Hi.
All right. Now we're gonna get into old business legislative discussions. Are there any?
I think we can skip that and just like you and you and Phil have this bond that just handle it.
On this person though, I mean.
Just email them, you know?
All right. Well, then let's get into the town manager's report. Tom?
Okay.
Please away.
First, uh, staff scheduling. This is just, you know, informational purposes. Because uh, you know, we're we're temporarily thin. Um, most of you know Riley's situation. Riley has not changed her situation. So today is the first day she wasn't in. She was like incognito hiding but getting work done. But today she didn't come in. Anyway, uh, no news on Riley's front, but we do have uh, Clyde Jenny, who is a retired um, town clerk from Heartland and the person who trained Riley coming in a couple of days a week to handle the the recordings, uh, both Michelle in the assessor's office and Tiffany in the treasurer's office uh, have been cross trained to handle day to day things. You need a birth certificate, death certificate, marriage license, dog license, all of those kind of things. So we're pretty well covered. Uh, so everybody's doing well. Riley, I think, is a little anxious, but um, we're we're covered there, but a little patience if you go into the clerk's office. Um, there's new new hands in there. Um, Natalia in the finance office is in the middle of a three week vacation, going home to Columbia to see her family. So uh, things are running well there, but it's on autopilot. We're paying the bills and all that kind of stuff, but I don't have, you know, March closeout figures. Uh, Jen is currently uh, down in Florida taking care of that business. She'll be back here on Friday. She'll be back for a week and then that's the end of of her time here. Uh, and uh, Bill Daniels starts on May first. So and Bill was in earlier this week. He'll be in again on Friday to to meet with Jen. So and he's um, working with West Windsor uh, to schedule introductions and stuff over there. Um, Deb Olmstead, who normally is out in Kansas, she's here for a month. So she's also providing, you know, backup in the office. She's, you know, is the treasurer in in Heartland. She can be a jack of all trades. So um, we're covered here.
Good.
Say that, but it's a little different. Um, next, last week I was in uh, Woodstock for a conference for a couple of days. It's a, it's kind of an unusual thing. I think it is a more formalized beer drinking at Harpoon monthly meeting that I think I mentioned that a number of the local town managers do. So the Woodstock town manager's wife does like big time event planning. That's that's what her job is. And she was gracious enough to help put together this like unofficial conference. So we don't have guest speakers. There's, there is an agenda, but it's mostly just input from the the people who are attending to have general conversations on people's experiences or what what they're facing in their town that way. So there is fifteen, sixteen managers this year, uh, ranging from very new uh, to very old. Um, and it was useful. I think it regional uh, services was a big topic of discussion. A lot of that had to do with like the cost and availability of equipment and a general observation that rather than saying we should regionalize to save money, that it's kind of changing from the bottom up and that we should consider regionalizing in order so that we can provide this service. I think the whole, we could save money is kind of a nebulous thing. Um, but when you're having trouble finding everything from plow drivers to assessors to uh, firemen and police that um, that that took a big topic. Um, and I have on here the town hiring. I know uh, that has been uh, topic of discussion amongst the board and the community. And I I put it on here just as there there was quite a bit of conversation of how different people have come and gone. And I can say I have seen everybody in that room get hired. And they sometimes weren't the first. So I was, that's my nice way of saying I'm the oldest one there. So I've seen everybody else come along. And the stories range from um, a young lady in a in a small community uh, seeing an ad on Front Porch Forum. How would you like to be the town administrator in our town? And she thought, well, that could be interesting to um, you know, broader searches using consultants and the successes and lack of successes and no real there there was, if there was a theme, it was the community should be aware of how they're presenting themselves to the candidate. One, one example was um, uh, one of the local town managers was an interim town manager in a different state, but he was in the running for the final position. So his city council said, because you you're the manager right now, we would like to host a cocktail party for the three finalists, of which he was one. So he had to put together a party basically to meet the candidates. And he said, the whole thing was just like super awkward, like no, no, nobody would have thought the thing through. There was another example of uh, somebody coming from out of state to be one of the finalist interviews. They come, they sit through several hours along with other people and he and his wife were headed back home for the night and they were about forty-five minutes out of town and they got a call saying, hey, we have some more questions. Can you come back? And he said, we did, but they were, the the whole road back was um, what does this say about them that they would A, ask that and expect that? And um, I guess in the long and short of it was um, he's still there and happy enough, I suppose, but that that is a community that has some turnover in the past too. And he wasn't a part of that past turnover. Didn't know what had happened there, but if there seems to be a lack of organization or clarity, uh, that was kind of the point. And there were other people that had similar things that it just didn't seem to be a very organized process when it went through. Um, I there there is, there are two retired town managers uh, in the area that were not there this week. Uh, one is Tom General. He had been a town manager in a number of communities, uh, most recently as as the higher town manager, he was in Springfield. And he retired three or four years ago, and he has been the interim town manager in Thetford and Killington and Woodstock twice. Probably other places, but I'm gonna get ahold of Tom and just ask him to give some background, some commonality on how that works. And uh, Frank Heald was long serving town manager in Ludlow and he's assisted in Woodstock, um, like uh, Cavendish and Springfield. So um, and and his he he has some examples of um, not turnover, like not everything goes badly, right? That there there, there's a lot of examples of somebody leaves and somebody comes in and 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 it works out. I think in one of the handouts that I have provided is there does seem to be a correlation of success when a a manager from the area is chosen. I think maybe you know what you're getting. I think one interesting one is um, Cavendish, um, they hired the uh, water and sewer director from Springfield to be their town manager. But at that time, they have a water and sewer project going on. It's kind of the thing in Cavendish. So um, you know, what do you, what do you need and what are you looking for? So try to try to make things match. So uh, and I sent another uh, I think it's Highgate. Dominic Cloud is the one behind that. Uh, Dominic is the town manager in St. Orleans and he works for VLCT assisting with this. Uh, I don't, I don't know for sure, but I think it it's like eight or ten thousand for his to do that kind of thing. Um,
And what what does he, what is that process look like if we hire someone? I've been curious. What what is their, what would their responsibility generally be versus us not hiring and taking it on ourselves?
I I think um, any consultant can handle the legwork like, and that can range from I'll write up the ad.
Okay.
Um, now I'll come in, I'll talk to the board. What do you want to do?
Okay.
So what are you looking for? Okay, I'll listen to that. I'll put together something that looks that way. What kind of search do you want to do? Broad search, narrow search, that kind of thing? And like I'll I'll see emails from Tom about a couple of times a year. Hey, like like this Highgate one, hey, something's going on. So there he's reaching out within the like the VLCT kind of network and he's going, you know, beyond all that, but he'll he'll start gathering those things, provide the review of the the responses that come in. I assume he's working with the staff at VLCT to do that as well. And then provide recommendations to who the select board should meet personally and go through those things. I think he was involved with the um, current Hartford town manager as well. MRI is another one. MRI is doing the uh, Lebanon search right now. MRI is who Windsor used when I was hired. It's who I used when Bill Sampson was hired. And uh, you hear good, bad or indifferent. I don't know what the fee is for them anymore, but I don't think it's a fee. Um, I can send you some links of dog and pony shows that go on. I saw one where they must have interviewed like every department head in the community and it's a great place to live and work. We'd like to be here and all that kind of thing to community members and, you know, that that kind of thing that goes out. Um, so all that provides some guidance. I I think he he could be helpful. So what are you looking for? What do you need? Um, okay, if that's what you need, all right, here's some suggestions and kind of carry that through. I think something that else that is is come up is don't, don't discount the difficulty it is to find a home around here. Uh, you know, and that's like Vermont, not not around here. So if you're gonna do a big search, think about the likelihood of being able to find somebody to uh, get here. And there have been managers that have been hired that then reject, you know, they accept the offer, then reject it when they uh, can't find out.
Do we require the manager to live in town?
Okay.
All right. Wait, did you say yes or no?
No.
Cause I thought I read on the charter.
That's like Springfield requires that.
Yeah.
And um,
Yeah, our charter said that the town manager did not have to live in Arkansas.
So that gives a little more flexibility.
Right. So and um,
I mean, we don't want him to live in Arizona, but or even Burlington.
Yeah. And and that's, well, and there was, what, what, um, there, one Upper Valley town manager uh, lives in Wolfsboro, New Hampshire and has an apartment here. Uh, so but he has has to, he has two houses or an apartment and a house because his wife still works there. Um, there's another town manager who lives in uh, Westchester County, New York and has an apartment in the town here. Uh, another manager is from Grand Isle and had commute to both ways. Trying to think of there's um, oh, yeah, there's another one now that's uh, I think uh, Fairhaven and commutes. So they're all, they're all doing it, but I think that that's kind of what was driving the conversation about doing what you have to do, you know, for your career. But uh, it's um, the housing thing is is difficult. Particularly, well, you got, you got the careers and the housing, like your spouse, you know, has got a great career somewhere else and you don't want to do that. So um, something that comes into play. And you know, the the other part, it didn't really occur to me, but there's been some so I'll call it anxiety about the timeline. And
Public ownership of that.
I'm there too.
What is more normal? Is for a town manager, and I think Lebanon is a current normal example. Sean, I don't know when he started looking. Uh, I think there are a lot of people. I mean, I usually look at the ads just to see what's going on out there and what people are paying and that kind of stuff. So you find, hey, I'll, how about that? That's a good one. So they're going through a process. You never want the where you're looking to contact your current employer until you're like the person until somebody throws you under the bus. But so Sean tells people in late March that he's accepted a position elsewhere. So we're three, three weeks into that and the the ad showed up this week in ICMA, which is like the National Town Managers Organization. It was an expectation to hire somebody, you know, have them on staff by uh, you know, fall. So you're talking April, May, June, July, August, September, maybe October. And that's the normal thing. What's not normal is for the town manager to say, hey, in in eighteen months, I'm retiring. So wring your hands about that for the next eighteen months. I mean, you you look at five or six months is when this process normally starts. And you really can't get too serious about looking until um, you're close enough that people who are looking um,
They have a job and
Yeah, can come on board. And I said, yeah, I have some flexibility. So it's it's not, you know, right on that. But that's kind of the normal timeline. And I, you know, I think, I don't know, I sent out something about listen, you know, that nobody's done this before. There there isn't the way. I think the things I've sent you have all been completely different. Um, but to hear from some experiences, I think that the two people who have been involved in in the interim things can get you started. So they at least know what questions to ask if you want to interview consultants. Um, you spend that money, how much do you want to spend? What's the real, you know, that kind of stuff. But get your legwork done and then, you know, get serious about it as we get into the late summer, early fall.
Ryan?
June, June twenty-sixth, right? So not this summer, next summer is when you're looking. Correct. June twenty-sixth?
Twenty thirty.
June of twenty-sixth. Flexibility. I can go on the twenty-first or the twenty-ninth, but uh, yeah, June, June of twenty-sixth.
But you said you're a little flexible. Like, let's just say we didn't find someone or we found someone, but they couldn't come. You you might be just a little flexible of like, hey, I could do a few more months for you guys or
Oh, yeah, like I'm I'm, we're gonna stay living in town for better or for worse. Uh, I don't have any I don't know what I'm doing next, but I uh, so it's not like I'm gonna be looking for where to go next, you know, starting in March or April or something like that. So as this is going along, if you find the best person ever and they want to start in February or March, I could be okay. Uh, in um, Londonderry, they just hired somebody who it's their first time, uh, first job as a town manager. And the the person retired on town meeting day who was there, but he's hanging out for three months. You know, I'll commit a day or two a week, but you tell me what you want, I'll do it. I can do that too.
I want us to know how much over, like, we, we can have our own opinions about you, Tom. How much overlap do you think? It probably depends on the person, but overlap are you hoping for for training, like a month? Two weeks, three days.
It's a
Um, I I think that might, as I'm asking the question, I'm wondering if you're gonna, if that answer would change depending on the candidate, but
Um, well, it it would. I I think at a baseline, expecting that the staff is here now is essentially the staff that's here when I leave. They're all very good. It's not like they're okay. There there are no staffing issues.
Yeah.
And there are some very strong, well, like with Riley going out, the fact that she can be gone for as long as she wants and we're picking up the slack and the slack and then when Riley's here, she's the glue that keeps everything together. Debald instead is like that. And, you know, so, so that, so that part's good. And I, I can only go from my own experience. When I came here, you know, I was elected in Connecticut. I started here in August and my term was up in November. And it was about a year after I had been here already and I got a call from the guy who, um, got elected to take my place. And he was looking for some file and it turned out the IT people down there had moved all of my files to a place he couldn't see. So he had gone a whole year with nothing from me and everything was okay. So I, you know, what do you need from me? You know, nothing. And when I came here, I came up for two or three days and met the Steve who was in the position at the time. And that, that seemed fine. One town said, we're going to renew your contract for two years, but you have to train the new guy for a year. Nobody wants to do that. And that manager walked in one day that, that the, the existing one that just says, I'm done, I'm out of here. So they got nothing. He walked away from all this, paid it off and things like that. So that's and the end of my rambling answer would be what, one of the conversations that we had last week was in, uh, what do you want? Do you want new, young, first time or, or early time on as a town manager? Bring a lot of women vigor, uh, like to the whole thing and give them understanding if they're new. They're gonna make mistakes and you're willing to have some failures and is your department, are your department heads strong enough to be able to put up with that kind of thing? But there's something that a young person brings, or do you want somebody who's coming with a lot of experience, but also, well, this is the way I do it. You know, and that can be good or that can be not be good. So that's, that had more to do with the board's expectations of don't hire somebody that is going to be maybe set in their ways. And then when they're set in their ways that you're mad that they're set in their ways, or to have somebody who doesn't have a lot of experience under their belt. And then be mad because, you know, they take some missteps, so.
And that's something I've been thinking about a lot and I feel like the biggest thing that I fear slash see that we need is somebody that's able to mess with the cash flow that we have in the town. And somebody that's going to be really financially tap danceable and also have a great sense of humor. So I guess kind of a cross between the two things that you're saying, but somebody that's inventive and has a really strong financial background over like, because if you trust your department heads, which I do too, like that's what we will be missing with you.
I'm also hoping for like that financial literacy because we do the budget. So like to have a town manager come that says, oh, well, I've never done a budget before. That might not be the best fit for us, but I just feel like you've gotten us into a, a pretty good place as good as we could be in right now. Um, and so I would like to keep going in that direction. So I'm out of everything, like you said, it, it requires a BCA and, uh, was it business or?
Oh, like an MBA in government administration.
But that's not like something that I don't think we need, need, maybe it is, but I don't think we do. I, I think one of our strongest needs is going to be like that financial budget part, being able to hold this portion. Yeah. Ryan?
Just to kind of jump in there, I think obviously that's, you know, want somebody that and I don't know, like Tom says, maybe literally to get super far down the rabbit hole on this, but and Tom said this a hundred times to me about is that you also have to have some balance. You can't just put somebody in there that's strictly a numbers person. Because the management personalities, uh, yeah. All this other stuff that, that they have to juggle is very important too, not to get I think balance and Tom surrounds himself with some pretty good people underneath him that can handle. A lot of the financial stuff. I'm not saying that completely disregard that, but also uh, you know, when you look at Tom's background, there's a lot of business, private sector stuff that I think has added a lot of value. You know, coming to the town, taking a little bit of the non-traditional look. And Tom, I mean, I think that's, what would you say about that?
I, I, I think the, um, there does seem to be some commonality in people that have a business background versus a government background. I do find government backgrounds or nonprofit backgrounds are much more willing to take, well, we can't do that because or, um, I won't, there, there's a conversation going on right now about the Constitution House getting opened or not. And the, the voices that are, can't we just open it for a couple of days, even if we stand on the porch? Versus, well, this funding source says you can't do it all. Like, like there's all these reasons why you can't do anything and that can be a, a problem. If, if you really don't know what you're doing with money, that can be a problem. I, where I think it, my expectation is that Natalia is really strong. You know, she, she needs to learn the municipal aspects of, of finance, but she understands finance and she's really excelling at getting together some structure. Uh, I still have to, like, she'll come to me and say, well, Tom, you know, we're, you know, 30% over budget on this line item. And, you know, I don't know, I've looked at all these things and, you know, dude does all the math. Well, Natalia, that's because we spent 92,000 on the digester cleaning over there and we only budgeted 18 because we haven't done it for four years and that should come out of capital. Oh. You know, so that, that's what I have because I have some experience. But Natalia will point those things out. I think the part that concerned, I mean, when I see managers, when they only look at numbers and they don't handle people, whether it's the public or the staff. I'll admit, not every public person thinks I'm the best person ever, uh, and not every employee thinks I'm the best boss ever. But, um, you know, on it, it's not on the agenda, but I've been getting a number of calls saying, when is dump day?
Hmm, it's all over social media.
It's all over social media. And as I'm sure you all recall, last year when it was a very difficult budget season and the school was going to go up 20 or 30%, we cut everything out of the budget. And I think that dump day is one of those great examples. There is actually a reason for all of the things that are in the budget. You may not see it when we reduce the maintenance line item in the police department or fire department, but that's impacting the people down there providing service. Dump day impacts everybody. It was only $7,000, but it came out of the budget. We will have a dump day. It'll probably be May 24th, which is Memorial Day weekend, but that's when the highway guys are around. So if you have somebody who says, well, it's not the budget. I, it's always in the budget. It just means shift your priorities. So I wanted to get three quarters of the way through the year. And it doesn't look like we're going to have a lot of extra, but it doesn't look like we're going to be a lot behind. So we can absorb seven or $8,000 from somewhere. And I think those are the things that the community appreciates. Like my sidewalk is so bad, it's got to be replaced. We will come up with a hundred thousand dollars somewhere. And you can, you can't do it for everybody, but you, you, you have to know when to say yes and when to say no. And my, the way I look at things is the, 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 the budget and the, and the spreadsheets are the skeleton. You need to have it there to get the support, but you have to be able to flesh it all out so that you know where to put the resources and, and not. And I think by the time I go that all the department heads will be much better at managing their own budgets, the so, um, the finance part shouldn't be quite as much. And the last part is that when you get people that have a particular strength, if it's finance and that's all they're going to look at, that's bad. If it's, I think, I, I, you know, I joked that I, you know, my, my education background is in marketing. Marketing is almost sales, but not quite, but you, you're trying to push your product out. Running my own business, I manage it the way I manage a business. I, I, I can, I know where the numbers are like this, but I don't know accounting. If you get somebody who's all into policies and procedures, they're going to spend all day long writing policies and procedures. And we need to have some updates to our policies and procedures. But that's not managing. That, the, the, those are the things you outsource. So anyway, there, there's, I think a fair amount for it. And when we dedicate some time to just talking about where it's from or meeting with the department heads. I don't think maybe it's part of a public meeting, but go talk. What, what would they be looking for in the next person? Where do they see strengths and weaknesses? Where? What do they need for their department? What kind of town manager is going to help that out that you'll, you'll, you'll get this through. And I think those are the conversations that can be starting.
Now.
Fair, fair, yeah. But that's not the search, that's learning.
Thank, this is really illuminating. About just like the work that you're putting in and what to expect more clearly about the timeline that we want to have. I want to do you think that it would be kind of silly to start fully, like, this is an internal process right now?
And it's collecting information.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're, it's an, it's, we're, we're marinating and growing and gestating and all a bunch of other fun words right now. And from what I'm understanding from this conversation, what would be expected and, and normal would be for this to become an external thing late summer, like August, early September. That's what, that's what I want. That's what I want to know. So I'm like, all right, so what? Yeah, is that?
So I think we need to do some promoting of the town in the meantime.
Yes, yes.
Because I think yeah, I've talked to the department's heads, get in a position of presenting something to offer an employee.
Well, so that, I emailed Tom today because he emailed about Highgate, which is so, and I was like, wow, these are so classy. Like, how are they getting these nice, like they're, I don't even know. It's not, it's a cover letter for the town that is cute with little graphics or whatever, like. So that, that kind of what
It, it is like a
And you were saying, you said, like, it's it's you and you said, and Tom responded because he's the best. The worst thing is when I asked Tom a question, I'm like, I didn't hear back from him and it's because he responded like nine minutes later.
I mean, I Sit around waiting on.
I know, baby. But you, you said it was like part of with a consultant that would be wrapped up with it. Which is cool. I have like a dream that we, I'm like, we could just make that. And I'm like, no, that's, I don't want it to look like a science project.
It's like, it sounds like six months is more of like a
Intense.
A normal timeline of when someone leaves. If we started now and we found someone and then said, well, you won't have a job for like a year, but
Well, then do you want that when it is? That's what makes sense to me. So I'm like, now what we can expect is until that six month timeline, that's when we really refine, like the internal process should be started right now. It's just that we don't want to start advertising and going bonkers with it.
Yeah. And, and I, I would say October, November, there should be an ad out.
Okay.
Be like, whatever, whatever's being done is done. And that's in fairness, Tara showed me this outline and to make copies, I said, I wouldn't do that. Because it's, I, I just, you, if it makes you feel good to look at some structure, that's nice, but you don't know what it's supposed to be yet. And, and
And it may change.
Well, I, that, I think if you just look at, this is like, I go backwards. I think somebody should be hired in February. Okay. Like the decision made in February, start going backwards. Outside, like I've known that I'm going to be retiring for a while now. And for me and what am I doing for a job? And I mentioned it, I think to a degree in these meetings is that I really do want to have the table set for whoever comes next, and I don't want that to be my idea. But, uh, there are projects that we are pre-engineering for roads and, you know, water and sewer, and they all have price tags. There are, um, quality of life things that could talk, but whether it's like the, the rail yards park or, you know, other, the playgrounds, other places that I wouldn't call it a town manager search, but I think if over the next six months, there's three, four or five, what do you want out of the communities? Uh, and I go back when Bob Haidt did a series of things in the different parts of the town. Here's the stuff that's here already. Did you even know that? Or taking a picture of what the, the lot next to the new building looked like, you know, 10, 12 years ago, what it looks like now. You may wish to build another building there. Would you be willing to? Hey, to build another building there. I, I, well, if we're talking more about building more houses, would you be willing, is, is how important is that to you? Important enough to take a risk and do that? Do you really want to improve the main street sidewalks downtown? Doing all of that and you go, okay, that's this much money. That's this much money. And let's, let's just say the town says, don't want any of that. We're happy where we are. We got to stop spending money. If the sewer plant isn't spewing stuff all over there, at least spewing it in a farmer's field where that's okay. But then you're looking for that kind of person. If you're looking for continued, I'll say continued revitalization, you may be looking for somebody who says, this is what my community looked like eight years ago, and this is this great housing project and, and public space that we were able to get through. And I'm done with that. I'm looking for a new challenge. That may be the person that you're looking for. So I think as you meet with staff and talk to members of the community, and in the meantime, we, we do not community input on what a town manager is, but community input on what the future of Windsor is. You start gathering all this kind of information and you're getting to the fall and you're kind of getting a sense of what does that profile look like? And, you know, I said to somebody about job descriptions, that the job description is in the statutes, the town manager responsible. That was you? So that's A, B, C, and D. You, you, you're not, you're not going to be shopping for somebody with a job description. You're going to be shopping for someone saying, we know that he's responsible for the staff and the property and all this kind of stuff. But what are his skills that are going to allow him to meet those, those general requirements?
So, so what are the, um, methods to gather, um, community input that are on the table, um, for what people foresee for the town's future? Would you say that's a public forum? Would you say it's a survey? Would you say it's a? What do you think?
We'd have to decide.
Yeah. I mean, what are the options out there for gathering that information?
The ones you're talking about.
Okay, I'm like, yes, we should do, yeah, if we can do both, why not?
Maybe we do. Just to try to get a little
A barbecue.
Well, and I think that kind of gets I'm not a big one for let's write a plan and follow it. Anything, okay? I'm kind of like, let's just fly out of the seat of our pants. But the, I don't think there is a thing, I think the thing to be aware of is there are segments of the community that come out for things. And because 30 people show up in a room, that doesn't mean that those 30 people have a louder voice than the other 3,000. And it's not, it's not a knock, it's an observation, but we went through a number of public, uh, forums on, um, the prison use. And turn it back over to the grasslands. It should all be open space. It should be developed. It should be housing. It should be like that. So you have that, you think you're going to get clarity, like, oh, everybody thinks the same thing. What you do is you go, oh, that's not, so if you set it up like this is going to be the answer thing, well, now half the people who showed up are ticked off because obviously you didn't hear how important it is, what they had to say, because you're not going their way. So that's, I, I think if you're saying this is what we're doing to get that answer, by contrast, um, the town manager in Woodstock over the last year went through a really big deal for them. They, they acquired the private water system. And through a number of the storms, um, the system was a pretty bad, uh, disrepair. Uh, some flooding knocked out water service to the town. People were all sorts of upset. So it's one of those things of, yeah, we'd like to have water. No, we don't want to pay for it, you know, kind of thing. So it, we knew that it was going to take some selling. And I, I think he said they were in like the 30 to 40 meeting things where they split up members of the select board and said, we're going to say, we're, we're going to be at this restaurant, this bar, this meeting place, this, you know, rotary club, whatever it is. And it doesn't matter if one person shows up or three people show up, but let's all practice so that we're all kind of on the same page of what we're looking for. And, um, there was somebody who doesn't, um, work in Woodstock, but lives in the area. And he said, I ran into like three of those meetings just because I was out, like standing in front of the grocery store one night. And I like, you know, that's an example of you're not out to do it, you're just in the community. So you reach out, hey, you know, we're going to be looking for, what do you think winter's looks like? You know, you moved to town three years ago. Are you happy? Is there something you're looking for? And you, you know, be a little more conscious of those conversations and then have some formal things. You can have a survey that's focused on this kind of topic and the survey, it's on that kind of topic. And you can have public forums where you gather that kind of thing. And you can do a lot over, you know, four or five months, even during the summertime.
Yeah.
But just say, hey, we're listening. Not, we're going to conduct a survey and then we're going to get an answer to what we want for our town manager.
I want to conduct.
Well, surveys are good. They're a tool. And I'll also just caution a little bit. Maybe it's different doing this for a job, but when it may make When it may make you feel good to put together a pretty brochure or a nice little video about how wonderful Windsor is. But when you're looking for a job, you're looking at the money, you're looking at the size. You're looking at the Google search to see how much drama is in the background. And if you find a community that seems to be moving in the right direction, not a lot of Google drama, but a lot of positive press. And uh, stability, when you go back now, all the meetings are recorded pretty much everywhere. That that's gonna, like, I I wouldn't spend tons of money on the pretty. I would make, I mean, you 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 don't wanna make it look. Like a kindergarten pro- you know, project, but. When I, when I see towns that are. I don't know if it's Kennebunk or Kennebunk, but one of those, they had a really nice video. And I'm thinking, I think everybody knows that's a pretty nice place. And it's pretty expensive.
Over selling is suspicious, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and it's and I.
Why are you trying to make it look so good?
And I know I I applied. I won't say the name is Coastal Maine. So uh, Kathy and I went up for a weekend, it was a Saturday morning. And I told the story a lot, but I go in and I meet with their. Group, I think it was the city council and a couple of employees. And the guy says. You're from away. I said, yeah, I think it was, it's like Stevie King live here? You're from away. You know, yeah, I am. But, you know, I know what I'm getting into. I've been up here before. And then uh, near the end, they said, so have you seen the salary? And they had reduced the salary a fair amount. And I said, yeah, I I figured you must have allocated to some different departments. And they said, um, no, we figured if we lowered the salary when we hired somebody, the severance package would be less. And they had had some drama in their past. They they had some discontent uh, in the community that was. You know, nothing terrible, just the press wasn't good. So anyway, I left that. I watched for a while. They they've gone through three town managers in probably seven or eight years. They called me back and they they said, hey. Any change you'd wanna reconsider? And I'm not thinking it's because I was all that great. I'm thinking they're stuck. And I said, no, I'd already accepted the job here. But that goes back to the, how did the town present itself?
Exactly.
There's that stereo, I get it, I'm a flatlander. Um, I think that's usually done in good humor. I know there are some people, a little less good humor about that. But. You know, you don't wanna interview, well, you know what they say about Massachusetts people. Not to pick on somebody, but we know that one's true.
Some of us are.
And you're taking it negative? I'm thinking that that.
I've heard it before.
Positive things, right? I've only heard positive things.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, of course. Yes. The reason I was freaked out about the timeline. Is I've been concerned that maybe we would not be able to find. That many candidates to even apply because everywhere you look, all you ever hear is. Short staff, nobody applies, there's nobody to work, that kinda thing. So I think that's. Was driving my concern. And that like. You know, I don't wanna be down in the eight ball in February, that kinda thing. Do you feel confident, though, that? Like, we'll have some candidates? I mean, I don't know this business is positioned, you know? How many people go into this kind of work and?
Well, from, I don't know, I don't know Swansea, but I talked to Alex who is putting together and they they are. Um, so they got about thirty candidates and there's um, more than a handful that are strong. And Swansea seemed like a community that's on the upswing, you know, doing well. I it'll be, I think, interesting to watch Lebanon. At least around here, Lebanon is. You know, they got all the bells and whistles, it's a strong community, they got economic development. I mean, they they still have staffing challenges and things like that, but I'm I'm gonna guess that. Uh, they should be going pretty well. But there are towns that. Have gone through searches and are are really settling and. I mean, I I don't know, talk to somebody who's on the search committee when I came here. I know I was one of three, but I've been told that if I didn't take the job, they were probably gonna have to start over again. But you look at what Windsor's history had been at that point, and I'm honest, I had no idea. I I was moving here for the, I wanted to live here, so it kinda didn't. I wasn't as concerned about the career thing. But from a. Desirability. I make a very competitive salary. You're not gonna save money by bringing somebody else in. For the size of the community, but to have full paid fire and police and water and sewer recreation. It's it's a, you have all of the things that a bigger community has, so that's challenging without fifteen, twenty or twenty-five thousand people. So if you could come here and have a more. Compact community, um, and, you know, ma- make a decent living doing it. And in geography wise.
Why not?
Why not? I I think it'd be a very competitive job.
Well, I think that makes me feel right, Ryan's had his hand up.
Right.
Oh, I was. Just gonna basically say what Tom makes. I think there's a lot of reasons why, from a town manager standpoint, uh, we're very competitive and. And we'll be very competitive in. The compensation package, uh, you have very. I think it's a big. Step up for a lot of the towns around us. I think Windsor's gonna, oh, we're a smaller town with pretty. Robust government system that would be a big step up for a lot of people and there's not a lot of headaches. So I think it's gonna be, I think we'll do well in this search.
I was just gonna say there, I think being a kind of a part of the Hanover community may help. I mean, Dartmouth College, I mean, there's a lot going on culturally and artistically and, you know, if people are. So inclined, there's options, there's things to do. I think in skiing, you know. The other thing is, you're you're doing two jobs because you do, I. Normally, as a town manager, isn't necessarily part of the highway department, right? Like the head of the highway department. You had like two different roles.
So a a town that has all of the services that we do. Would typically have a um, director of utilities, like the water and sewer folks, and uh. A a director of, you know, highway departments, maybe those three are that way. I mean, Windsor used to have a. A a water and sewer director, a guy who was an engineer, and that's where I. I believe it, it's not just, you know, a selling thing, but. Of my set, excuse me, Sally, only sixty percent of it is in the general fund. The rest, you know, the other forty percent is in the water and in the sewer. So when you look at what what is the town manager getting paid, it's a way to low market. I mean, if you just looked at it that way. And it it is more common to have at least one, if not two other people. I don't think there's enough going on here that you could. Keep a motivated person busy. I mean, if if we had. Twenty million dollars to spend on wastewater and water improvements, just pulling the old stuff out of the ground, putting it into managing those kinda projects. That would be a challenging job for someone like that. We just don't, we don't have the money to do that.
So I'm just saying, so I don't, so we'll really be expecting this town manager to basically do the same duties then.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's kind of.
And 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 it's.
Not.
Allows.
Unusual, that unusual.
It's not, well, and it's like, it's all kinda driven by money. It um, so the fact that we don't have. That over there, so just like, I could say I'm an inexpensive town manager. I'm also an inexpensive water. Uh, director, sewer director, but the um. You know, I know the employees watch this, that I think that they would, they would agree that they're. The foreman are are, you know, well compensated for what they do. Cause there's a lot of responsibility on them because it's sent like, I'm I'm the person that if we're gonna buy a loader. I have to come to you and say we need the loader, which would be a director's job. But I put a lot of weight on on Ernie and the highway department and Mike and, you know, water and sewer to. Do the, more than just the day to day running, but to come up with the strategic plans for. Capital improvements and, you know, equipment, things like that. And they're they're compensated for that responsibility.
So is is the fact that we're gonna have an expectation that this person can do the water and sewer? And you're, you know, all of, is that gonna um, limit in a severe way the pool of candidates? Who can do all that? I mean, is that?
Well, I'll put it this way, I. I I had. Steward experience because of the town I came from had a subsurface system that had failed and we had to go through a rather cantankerous. Effort to connect to the next town over. So I don't know if that was considered by the folks here. I mean, it's similar to West Windsor connecting here. But it's uh, you know, I don't wanna underplay it, but. If somebody can manage a business, manage people and allow them to do it. You, what you don't want is me putting on a hard hat, other than if I meet the governor. And and going out in the trenches and trying to tell people how to how to do their job, that you want me to be the one saying. What are the priorities? Where do we need to spend the money? How much can we afford to spend? I think I'd say when I came here, the prior. Town manager and. Uh, with and the board had already approved the one point four million dollar stormwater separation project. That I had peer reviewed by another engineering company and what it cost us eighty thousand a year in debt would have. Reduced our stormwater flow by four percent. Um, and I I this big thick thing that says, here's the most important thing you're gonna face was a twelve million dollar sewer treatment plan upgrade. And. There's. Like, like. We would have crippled the the user fees if that would have gone forward and. That was like a management, it's like, you can't do that. So, you know, and it was something as simple as, well, the expected lifespan of that equipment's about twenty years. It's twenty years old, so you need to replace the whole plant. I again, when I got an engineering company to do a peer review, they went through the plants because we have very low clothes, there's a lot of redundancy, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, over time, we've spent maybe six million dollars incrementally improving things. But again, if somebody says, well, I'm all about wastewater and this is how it's gonna be, and they're and they're not about management and and seeing the bigger picture. That would be a problem, but you don't need water and wastewater experience to do it. You just need management experience to. To see what the numbers mean and how does that fit in with the big picture.
But the salary that you say you get paid a decent salary is those two combined. Right. That's why I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand. If we had a candidate, don't they need to know that that's a combined thing for both those positions?
Yeah, oh, they need to know, but I don't think, I don't think it's a.
Not worry about it.
No, and and it. It's. It's unusual for a town of thirty-five hundred to have such a big water and sewer system. And they have a paid fire department and a big police department, all that kinda stuff. But it's not unusual, like I'm, like. Well, Claremont, Hanover, Hartford, they all, they all have those things and they have bigger staffs to go along with it, but Woodstock. Even Weatherfield's got a small water system. Uh, so it's uh, kinda like what I had in Connecticut, I had a very small wastewater treatment. Thing to deal with. So with. Anecdotally, the 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 town man, well, maybe this is a good example, the the town manager in Hanover. Has been there for not quite a year. And he replaced Alex, who was doing the Swansea search, who came from New Jersey, who was elected down that way. But um. Rob Kernke was their zoning administrator for nine years. So um. He didn't have any town manager experience, like he, and he may have had some somewhere in the back, but he'd been the zoning guy. But as we're talking. They have like two billion dollars in development that's going on. If they're having to do with the college, some voodoo. Heat, uh, your energy distribution uh, thing. And all kinds of, you know, college backed. Housing developments and things like that. So I'm kinda thinking Hanover's big enough that. Their departments, there there's some layers of management that provide oversight on the other departments, but they really need somebody that can, you know, put their finger on on. That kind of construction because that then spills over into traffic and into parking and, you know, all that other stuff. So. And that's an example, I think of, okay, we did a big search. Why are we gonna do that again when we have somebody right here who's like in the middle of our biggest issue right now?
So I I've, I feel, the way that I feel right now is like, okay, so we're doing exactly what we should be doing, which is being very curious. And making notes, and we have some. Like, kind of ideas about what we wanna do this summer, which is have like a town sponsored barbecue. And forum. Like your ideas.
Didn't bring biscuit up. In the uh, in the budget.
No, I really want it. I've been thinking about barbecue a lot, so I don't know. Carolina barbecue. Okay, Carolina, it is.
Seriously, like. I I didn't expect to have this kinda conversation this soon. What I would have thought was. I would, if I had it all my way, we would been starting this week and into May, talking about. So what do you guys wanna do for the next year? Give me some ideas on what's an important project. How do you wanna reach out to the community to see what they wanna think? But it's gonna take. You know, I can do incremental financing. This is what it will look like if you roll these projects out and take. Take a big bite, go a couple of years, take another big bite, or take little bites every year and let's go out and. Start getting that input. And as that input was coming in and you're starting to see maybe what. The future was gonna look like over the next few years. Then you would be talking about, you know, mid to late summer, like, okay, if this is what we're gonna be doing, maybe it's start time to look into what we need for our town manager. So it would have gone that way. Uh, and and really for me, I think I I mentioned this. I came up here because it looked pretty. People were nice, happy I did. Um, but there, the tone in the community, once I got here, was our taxes are way too high, we'll never be able to survive. And fortunately, I'll say Irene came through and did a complete reset. Besides having to refocus what the community was about, it also, I think, just played in to me, it's um. Yeah, little things like when the bridge across the way got washed out. I didn't know any of the history. I heard a lot about it, the history and the football players bouncing up and down on it and doing whatever they wanna do. But because I think my entrepreneurial background, I said, all right, well. That road washed out, that a Fraser Drive, we got money for that. Let's take the money from that and and, you know, Miller Construction says they'll do a prefab bridge. So we did all kinds of voodoo to take money from over here that was not at all part of the plan and got that bridge rebuilt. And I think I looked at that completely devoid of the experience of the bureaucracy that goes on like that and. We're not rebuilding Brook Road. People are mad, but it really doesn't matter because the state is saying you're not allowed to do it, but that gives us two million bucks. So that was a huge jumpstart in where we could do. Jacob and Court Street. Now, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It came out of Irene money. And I don't remember Pine Court Jake being too damaged in the storm.
No, it wasn't in the strike, but it was damaged over the years, but not.
But I I it would have been such a wrong fit for me to be here and being told. You gotta spend less. Taxes have to go down. We can't afford it, particularly when it was, nobody was saying the spending was too much. They're saying the tax rate was too much. And that's like, what are you talking about? The tax rate? It's, you pay taxes, not rates. Um, unfortunately, it worked out and to me, people saw the. They they stopped saying, stop spending money. They start sending, what are you gonna fix my street? You know, they saw that the money was being spent. And to me, that gets right back to the, we cut Dante out. What do you hear? Dante. We only had one snow snow plow for the sidewalk and it hits a pizza rebar. People want the service. And I have never seen people say, I just, I hear people complain about taxes and that's fair, and you have to be respectful of people's budgets. But there's also the side that says we want the community to move forward. You gotta balance that.
Good discussion.
I know, Jesus.
I think we have one last thing under the town manager's report.
Yeah, and it kinda segues in. So under the project status, I have notes on mine that I didn't put out there. The skate park. Rail yard recreation. So um, the picnic tables and the grills, I think, are here. So the highway department's putting them together. Uh, they have to do the final grading and stuff like that on the grass. Uh, if it ever stops snowing and that kinda stuff, that'll happen. Uh, sign the contract for fencing, so there will be fencing. That fences in the dog park and there'll be, uh, it's black chain link fence that will kinda run between the park and the railroad tracks, so there's barrier there. Uh, so that that's coming along. Here is a quality of life decision. The skate park that, uh, was originally designed was $560,000. And we were hoping that we would get a $500,000, uh, recreation grant that we didn't get. I think we overreached. If we probably would have asked for a hundred thousand, we would have got up at 500,000. It was too much out of a $3 million. Anyway, we didn't get it. So, um, we've gone back to the designer and said, hey, can we get it built in sections? And he said, well, it's pretty common actually. So if you want, the, the original one was supposed to be 8,000 square feet. So he says, I can do 2,000 square feet. One will fit into the other if you decide to do that. So for the, um, half the skate park, that's $275,000. Um, that's going to be close. Um, I would like to sign the contract so that we get on the list to get that done. I may be coming to you saying, I need 25 or 30,000 from that ARPA money that we haven't put anywhere to get it over the line. There's still some other feelers out for, uh, spending money. We don't have quotes for some of the other work, so we may be able to pick up some money right there, but we're close enough that I feel comfortable signing that so that we're on the schedule to get that built this summer. If, um, I'm not a skater. From what I can gather, this half will be good enough for somebody who doesn't know how to skateboard, but it won't be as cool as Lebanon, which is what we've been promoting. So it's another $260,000 if you want to build the whole thing at once. So that decision doesn't get made tonight, but if but what I'm kind of looking at is if the, uh, if there's community interest, now we'll save maybe 15,000 by doing it all at once. I think it is plausible to say we could take some of our blight funds for that because there used to be a really blighted brown field, a nasty area or turning it into a public space. So I can do that with a straight face, look people in the eye. Um, but I, I just, I just throw it out there. It, it would be nice to have more, but we're talking about spending a lot of other money. Uh, it has more to do, I think, with the, the momentum of the community and hey, this is really great. So let's do the whole thing or no, let's not do the whole thing. There's no great skateboarders here in town anyway. What do we care about? So.
I thought a lot of that was coming through Terry McDonald.
Excuse me?
I thought a lot of that money for the skate, that particular element was coming from Terry McDonald.
Well, that, that's, we, we have spent $700,000 so far. And Terry has raised 300,000 of that.
Okay.
Uh, through fundraising, like private donations and, oh, two, 260, three, almost $400,000. So that's
So that contribution's already?
Right. Then, yeah, that, that's, that we, we were expecting, like I said, this $500,000 grant that we didn't get. That blew a B hole, big hole in things, but we would have been like super sweet. Like if we would have got that grant and got all the other money that Terry raised, we would be, uh, easily talking about, you know, maybe bathrooms in, in the, uh, the exchange building. Uh, the pickleball courts going there, the, the rec departments got hopefully this summer. I thought it was last summer, this summer will be pickleball courts out at the, uh, fairgrounds, but we would have had enough money to make it. We talked about a, like a calisthenics path that would go around the outside. We know you have workout stations and things like, so there were all of these things in the background. If we got all this money, we can do that. The, the goal was to, to get the skate park thing, picnic area skate parks. Like I said, the dog park is just, that's a really cheap thing. Um, so you just put a fence up and now you have dog park.
Well, I'm confused now then too, because I thought I asked about this at one of the other meetings about the rail yards. So when you say we, I'm getting confused because I know you have, you work with them. So is the town putting in then the possible 200 or $500,000 from the skate park itself?
So far, the town hasn't put in anything. Okay? And it looks like we're going to be, say, 25,000 short.
Oh, the committee, let's call it.
Yeah, what, what Kerry started a, uh, nonprofit rail yards recreation and they have a little board of directors and they, they have had grants awarded in their name that have gone to this. The downtown transportation grant is an example of Terry did all the work, but the town is the recipient of that grant. So we're in that kind of, right. And then, and the town will, will own this. When it's all done, this isn't going to be, okay, Terry, you pay for the maintenance and upkeep. It'll just get folded into our.
If that's the case, are we going to have enough staff and, and help from the rec department to do this? I mean, is that going to? I mean, what, what are they going to need to do it? But
Yeah, what, kind of like, almost all the mowing is outsourced already.
Oh, okay.
So it'll, it'll cost a few thousand dollars a year to mow over there. But other than that, the other maintenance, like with the skate park thing, it may be going over there with a leaf born, blowing the weed leaves out of the spooky things. So it's not.
The garbage pickup and all that kind of stuff.
Given the, the benefit of having a public space down there versus the cost of maintaining it, it'll only get to be real money. If we start using the exchange building, that, that's where, for those who have been interested, I put it out there that it's a $250 basic rental fee. Uh, and with that, they get our, uh, event insurance that comes through the town, but that
So you can have an event there.
You can, but it's like, well, do I have to pay for the, the welcome center? And it's like, there, there's a down 25 or 50 dollar fee. It's not all that much, but we're already sending a cleaning service there just for the municipal use of the building and it's got bathrooms and all that. But if that building's going to be used, we have to put a porta potty over there. We're going to have to send, it'll be new cleaning service that goes over there and follows up after people.
Is it being used right now? Like at all?
No, no, we just haven't because it's had all the construction going on.
And the town owns it.
Yeah.
I have an idea. Now that the now that this is coming and there's going to be somewhat of a skate park, maybe a full skate park, the dog park, it's going to be more of like a kid where the kids can go. So you know that one of the things I really want to do is a teen center, but I need a building to be able to do this. If if I was able to create a nonprofit that would be able to do some funding to get that started, is that something that we would consider?
The building you can only use in the summer.
Is there no?
Take it, there's no water, there's no sewer, there's no heat. It's all closed. If you're all
Just a building.
It's just a building. You know, there's an fence there. And if that's, you've mentioned that before. And I say this to everybody who comes with us, we need a senior center, we need a kid center. We have lots of room. Go out and get the programming. And when you say we don't have enough room for the senior or this, the, the, the teen activities, then talk about buying a building or paying rent or the, the maintenance and overhead. But between the, the availability of the welcome center, the green room, the gold room, the select board room, the middle of the gym, the fairgrounds. Um, there's a lot of space around here. And frankly, when I see so, so many kids of all ages in the rec center, I wonder how many kids there are to do more stuff. Uh, I'm not saying there's that. And I think if there's quality programming, if you build it, they will come, but it's not going to be dependent on the building. So
Gotcha.
Get, get the programming going. And even in the summertime,
Yep.
That, that, the, the exchange can work for dances and, and things like that, or whatever, whatever the thing is, craft nights.
But there's no toilet and no water. Or is, is, will there, ugh, would there be a porta potty there in the summer?
Yeah. And, and then past years, but before all this started, we would leave a porta potty over there and we had the concerts on the common there for a few years because it's easier to move in inside if it's going to rain and have to cancel the concerts and stuff like that. So and, you know, uh, James Reed put together a series of lectures when professors came down from Dartmouth and that worked out. There's been a number of music things there.
It's a nice space.
Yeah.
It is.
So that the sound system is gone, but we have them. We're thick with sound systems around here. So
But there's power, right?
Yeah, there's power and, and the water and sewer is close. And that, that's been the part, um, aside from this skate park idea is that if the community wants it, whether you want to build new playground equipment down there, winterize the building, run water and sewer to the building. There's all kinds of things you can do, but it's not free. You just say, wow, that, wouldn't it be great if this? And for a few hundred thousand dollars, you can make a big difference and the carrying cost still wouldn't be all that great. I mean, the day to day maintenance.
But it's not, didn't you tell me that building isn't insulated either too? So you'd have to insulate it. You'd have to do a lot to the building for winter.
It's, it's literally just a wooden shed.
Yeah, that's why. So much more than that, you guys.
No, I know, but I'm just trying to stay like, it's basically just a big shed. It was great for these summertime events and stuff.
Yeah, right.
Build a new building. Back in the day, it was the, from what I understand, the offices for the engineering company that was putting, uh, interstate in. So they, they'd had stuff at one point and it's all close, close enough. So, but it, I'll say it'll be easier to outfit the building than it will be to come up with the programming to fill it.
Gotcha.
Just like that.
Gorgeous.
Okay. And speaking of spending money, uh, the, the two houses on National Street are going to the DRB for their permitting next week. So assuming that goes okay, I'd like it to go okay at that meeting and not carry on. I will be coming back and saying, so folks, what do you think about spending somewhere in the neighborhood of $425,000 for a couple of houses? And it will have houses put in, um, sometime in the summer, just to, what my thought on that is to, again, try to pay cash using our revolving loan funds that we can always go back and borrow from, uh, the blight bond to pay for them to replenish if we have this big rush on revolving loan funds. But if we get started and not take on new debt and just get the houses built and get, get that, uh, process set up of property management and all that kind of stuff.
This is the prefab ones you're talking about? I have had some questions. I don't remember what they are anymore, but I did have some talking to someone about that project.
It's not, it's not a universally loved thing. It used to be almost universally hated, but, um, the housing market, um, and I know there was some discussion from some about rentals. Renting probably had to be somewhere around $1,500 a month plus utilities. Uh, which $1,200 a month was a two bedroom apartment in that new building is what they were saying for. Um, and I don't view this as a affordability issue in the housing market. It's an availability issue. Because if things were overpriced, they wouldn't sell and everything sells. So everybody needs it. Anyway, but I was kind of surprised to hear $1,200 a month for, I think, two or four of the apartments in that new apartment building. And that's at 80% of the Windsor County.
So they did say, cause I was like, I thought they gave an, it was 12 to 1500, right? That they said would be like the average rent.
Oh, not the average one though. That, that was for those nice two bedroom.
Were 12 to 1400?
Yeah, well, I think it's Have a good night.
Bye, Ryan.
Bye, Ryan. I'm going to need to talk.
And so, uh, yeah, I mean, it's
I'm surprised too.
That, 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 those are, there's like four at 80% and then four at 60. And, yeah, that's, they, they have a sheet of, there's 25 apartments. They say six of them are for people who are experiencing homelessness. So they're not paying $1,200 a month.
But isn't there, there's somebody paying for it, like?
Well,
This date I would back subsidy of some sort.
I don't have, well, all of it. Well,
Okay.
That's, that's why, so I don't, I don't know. It's the same thing as in Union Square or whatever, how that works. I don't know. Some people pay $20 a month. Some people pay $800 a month.
Do you have a sheet that says how many apart? That was the part I was trying to get at that day, very inarticulately. How many apartments are going for certain rates such as like you said, this 480%, 460%? It was like
That information is available. If you contact, or I can contact, uh, the, uh, Windsor Wyndham Housing is the, I can get you Peters thing. It kind of
You could just send me the link. That would be great. Now I
Well, I don't know if I have a link. I know they want
Contact I
Just note that there is no role for the select board. Right? Just for your information.
We know they're interested in the apartments and they don't have a lot of information.
Yeah.
When you apply, you don't really have any information to go on.
Well, those same, anybody who's interested should be talking to super property manager because they're, they're the whole footprint down here. So this building isn't anything different than it just, now there's 24, five more units they put into the mixed master. Uh, so if you're on the outside going, oh, I need an apartment, they built another apartment. I think I'm going to apply that. You likely can't get in. I mean, you don't even qualify not that you can't get in. And as they were talking about a hundred people who would qualify at some level for 25 apartments is that demand thing. And there's certainly demand for the income sensitive stuff. And when you think of only four at 1,200, then there's six at nothing. So that's 10. And then the other ones are like 40 and 60 of the median housing. So they were talking like around $800 a month kind of thing. But if you hadn't been interested in how I get into Union Square, then there's no, in, need to be interested in that.
Yep.
Again, I'll get you the information so you know, but it's very similar.
With the select board.
Um, may, maybe I'm just carrying baggage with me from other board members that were very adamant that it shouldn't be rented to people from Windsor and it shouldn't be.
Oh, no, it just has people we know who will want to apply and didn't have a lot of information and they have applied and they still just not sure what went on and don't understand it exactly. So. And I'm not sure that's our role.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that's kind of it. It's all very structured through state programming. And so that's My only concern is you over, over commit or over promise and it is, it's, it's the same system that's been in place for decades for Phelps Court and uh, the the block and, uh, Old Windsor Village, they have different structures and parameters, but they're all managed by the same company. They're all, they fall under state programming. And if people need that type of housing, they should be getting their names on a list because it's a pretty big
There, there is a list. There's a big list. My concern, and this is not the board concern either, but psychosocial concern is that they're expecting the same sash workers who, sash worker who's handling the case load picked this up. And I think that's crazy. I think that
I think it is too.
It's, it's unrealistic. She's already overworked just and, and I, I think it's unreasonable that the expectation is that she's going to manage, not manage, but you know, provide services.
Yeah.
In that building. So I don't know who lives at that piece. I don't know who sash boss is, but
My editorial comment is the state is ignited a dumpster fire that everything that they're involved with, it's don't have the people when it, when it gets in, the state heavily, uh, relies on services.
Yeah.
And the state has no magic on, on, uh, getting employees. Um, I don't think, and I heard from a number of people that the, the remote work model that you hear, like no state people go to mobiliar anymore. It is added a layer of inefficiency to, um, how quickly they turn things around, but, uh, most, every department is very overburdened.
Yeah.
Government in general.
So do we have a motion to sign orders?
I'm ready to motion to sign orders.
A second. Is there any discussions? Hi. Hi. All right, let's send some orders. Are there any comments for items on the agenda that you can, that I've talked?
This is the, uh, land application thing. This is the, um, open container thing. This is the orders.
I feel like I'm always signing my life away now that signing official papers. There's no posted little thing.
Tiny one fund.
Oh, my God. Oh, wow. You need a I got confused with like a week and I thought the Windsor Community Dinner was this week and I bought 36 eggs.
I'll say it though, Kate.
No, I have, I think.
Was it your?
We only have to sign the top one here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh. Thank you for helping me.
Not, not to diminish things, but the, the, the actual bills get posted to the folder as they come. Diminished thing, but the 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 actual bills get posted to the folder as they come. So if you ever do have a question about any of the bills that are in there, they're online, but like, the reason Natalia and I came up with this top thing is. Going through twenty pages of bills now and seeing if you have a question is not the time to do it. They're all here. This is implying that you are aware of it. Always feel fetal.
I'm about to pee my pants. I'm going to do your board. Be like my my board, my comment would be, I am so happy that we had this discussion today. I really appreciate it. It's cleared things up for me and made me feel better to get better equipped to answer questions that are coming from everybody of like, wait, what are you doing? And now I feel more comfortable saying, nothing yet, but we're in the gathering information stage. You're asking me this question. What would you like in a town manager? What can you see for Wednesday? So like. I feel. Okay. And I appreciate y'all very much and uh. Thank you. I'm, I wonder if you use the rest. Yeah, I couldn't possibly.
Jeffrey. So I'm going to read a statement that I wrote because I don't want to leave something out. Um. At the last select board meeting, I'd made some statements that reflected what I was hearing in the community regarding hiring practices in town. Specifically, I was hearing that the school superintendent's hiring and the hiring for the chief financial officer were not advertised positions during the process. After receiving clarification in a conversation with Davis McGraw, I now understand that the superintendent's position was advertised and interviews were conducted with promising candidates. Regarding the chief financial officer, I now understand that was a planned promotion from within the department. I also expressed lack of understanding regarding the selection of a school board member following the resignation of an elected member. That process was explained by Davis as well. I did not intend to attribute negative motives to the school board. I'm grateful for Davis's willingness to reach out with more helpful information.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
You're welcome.
Mary.
I'm just really thankful that we had this conversation to start the. The ball rolling a little bit and what the expectations are and um I'm with them. I I feel like. I'm calmer and feel better about the whole. Plan. And also thank you for all the stuff you've been sending to us. It's been helpful. To see what others are doing.
Been interesting for you to figure all that stuff out too.
I think we had some good discussions today. Um, we did meet on. Tuesday, was it Tuesday? It's really bad that I don't know this, but um we did meet with Governor Phil Scott on Tuesday on Main Street. Uh there was a small.
Monday.
Monday. It was Monday. Um. And we got to tour the new apartment building and it was really nice and I'm so glad that I could make it down there. That's such a great addition to our community and I can't wait for everybody to see it when it's done. And that's all I got. So we're gonna adjourn this meeting at eight twenty four. I'm gonna, okay, question. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at six thirty P M and we are going to start.